Go into order, please. Ms. Cragan, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. School Committee Chair report, I just want to report, well, we've had another successful completion to a great school year, and thanks go out to those teachers, classroom teachers, administrators, and the hard work of the school committee as well. Thank you all and everyone that had participation in that wonderful school year. Mr. Stevens, Resource Committee report?
Resource Committee, we met June 15th, and we went over the school choice budget. And you should have in your packet what we have recommended for this coming year using school choice funds. And they should all be on tonight's, in tonight's packet, on tonight's agenda. Wendy Abramson, the math coordinator, came and explained everything that is being recommended for math, and she was very comprehensive. One of the things I'd like to point out, one of the things for Fitchburg High School, all freshmen this year coming in are going to get a Chromebook. And I think that's outstanding. So, we're making real progress there. Any questions on it? One thing, we voted for Crocker Field at forty-two fifty, but it didn't show up.
And Bob was...
And Bob would...
Yeah.
I don't know. We, and you have something in your packet about the monuments that we're moving in creating a garden at Crocker Field, and particularly moving the big nine, class of nineteen forty monument that honors all of the veterans of Fitchburg High School, Army, Air Force, Navy that were lost.
I think I can see why it didn't show up, because if, you know, that list that Bob gave you of the school choice, it wasn't on that list, it was a separate item.
Separate item.
So, Hattie must have used that spreadsheet to do all of the change items. Do you have the information specifically on that? Because if you wanted to vote it as a...
I believe it's in a packet.
As a separate piece of paper?
We've got a number of action items, would it be in there?
No.
No.
That's what we're saying is, it was discussed and approved, but it didn't make it into an action item because it's separate.
Okay.
It was a request from Crocker Field.
Yeah, I don't think it's in my packet.
Hmm? It's not in it at all.
You know what? It's in my, it's in my other packet.
Oh, here it is, I got it, it's on the email. It's a maximum cost of project, four thousand two hundred and fifty. So if you wanted, it's, it looks like this. If you wanted to put that in the form of a...
Could we...
Of a motion, you could get it done today, tonight.
You want to do that right now?
But it's not, so it's not part of this.
Well, no.
No, but we could do it separately, and I could...
What's the cost on it?
Forty-two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
And that's going to move all the monuments near the, to, around the scoreboard, which we are creating an area to honor all the people that have plaques there.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made, seconded to approve.
Are we approving putting it on the list, or...
Putting it, putting it on the...
I think we're approving, moving it, aren't we?
We move it? Our motion to put it on the list?
Is that what you'd rather do?
Yeah.
You should put it on the list of actions, and then motion to action.
All right, fine. I make a motion to add this to the list of action items.
Motion made, seconded to add the forty-two hundred for Crocker Field, movement of the monuments onto our action items for this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, so this is going to be action item fifteen dash seven oh eight?
Yes.
Look at that.
I'll bring that up with that.
Ms. Cragan, Policy Committee, any report?
Um, no, I, Marissa's out. We, I think we'll probably schedule a meeting after our administrative retreat.
Okay. Ms. LaBelle Pierce, Student Support, report?
So, we met tonight, and some of the items were follow-ups from the prior meeting. We talked about consistency in the school calendars, and having, you know, a conversation about the best way to get information out to parents, and everybody kind of does something a little different. But the websites are the, are sort of a central piece, so there's a, I think that's going to end up being a conversation through the summer and going forward about what the best way to get information out to parents is, and what the purpose of the district website, what the dis, what the purpose is that it serves. There was a really great mock-up of a parent curriculum guide, a parent-friendly curriculum guide that the IT department is working on right now, and that would be housed on the central or the district website, so that parents could just get an overview of what each grade entails, and maybe, maybe suggestions about how to help them in that particular grade. We had a discussion about events and parent involved, or big events with a lot of audience, maybe the best way to kind of see those events through, or make sure that they're a good experience for everybody. We had a discussion about kindergarten transition, and how to handle social, emotional transitions for kids who maybe are still struggling in that kindergarten grade, and we really are going to table that and deal with that at some other time, because that's a much bigger conversation than we could have tonight. And then we talked about what our plans are for the use of the funds raised at the gala. So, we raised, we have about twenty-two thousand dollars right now from the two gala events, and the Student Support Committee Subcommittee is going to be the entity to try to manage that, and we threw around a model tonight where there, we'd like to divide it in thirds. There would be some money that could be grant money for teachers to apply directly to, and there would be seed money. Right now, you know, we don't have a lot of that, but, and then there would be the use of scholarships out of that money, so kids who want to do some after-school programs who maybe can't afford it, maybe access that money for scholarships. So, we're putting a plan together, and we'll be able to report on that plan more after the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. I'm next, the school personnel. I'm told Superintendent that our numbers look better than ever regarding workers' compensation, people that are out for whatever reason.
Yes.
We've got a pretty good handle on that, and I'm pleased to report that. That's a good thing. So, that's all I have. Any comments from the committee?
Additional on the school personnel, we will be, we have tonight the managers, cafeteria managers, we are signing, and we have settled that contract with cafeteria managers.
Great.
I met with Rick Xena today, and he's working with the cafeteria workers, he's with their personnel, and we are going to be meeting with them to again with the contract, so...
But he hasn't, he doesn't have a meeting set up yet, but...
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. Executive Committee, I have nothing to report, any comments from the committee? And we don't have a student report, school's out, right? There's no students.
Where are they?
Would I be able to bring up a piece right now for business? I would like to request, and I'm not sure the channel how to do it, I'd like to request information from Monty Tech about their graduates and professions. I'm just kind of curious, I, in the years, two, couple of years I've been on this committee, I never hear about their postgraduate data, so I've just, I don't know how that happens, but I'd be interested to see that. I would like to know how many students are working in the concentration that they've chosen. So I'm just asking, how do I get that information? Does it mean...
I think we would start with Superintendent Harity, wouldn't we?
Yeah, I could, if you send me what your question is, you know, we could forward that to Superintendent Harity, you know, as a question from the school committee, and I'm assuming you're talking mostly about Fitchburg students who've gone and graduated, you know, how many of them are working in the professions for which they prepared? Is that your question?
Yeah, I guess I have a general question, maybe a larger one, about how the, I don't know, just that we've talked a lot in this committee about placing the right kids in the right places, right? Like, having the right opportunities for a lot of students who maybe aren't getting that opportunity, who would benefit from a trade education. And I just, I'm curious what the numbers look like for kids who are actually in benefiting from a trade education. I, so I'm not sure if I'm asking the right way, or how do I get that?
The Sentinel had something in there about a week or so back.
That's got me thinking.
And it had something like seventy percent of their students were furthering their education in college, and only about thirty percent were going in for the trade.
Well, that's what got me thinking about it.
And one of the things that used to be nice, Mr. Clark, who used to be on the school committee at Monty Tech, always sent me information, and I don't get any information from our members, school committee members from Fitchburg.
Are we entitled to that information, or are we...
I think we're entitled to it.
Public record, I believe.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Well, I think you're entitled to it because you pay for it. You're, you know, this, these are your students from your community that are going to this school.
Right.
And you would have a right to have that information, either they're requesting it, or like somebody requesting information from us, they would come to our school committee meeting. And I think, I think at least Sally has been to school committee meetings at Monty Tech before.
I have, I have also.
And Pete, so...
Yeah.
So, you would make that request from the superintendent?
If, if, if someone sends me something...
With a specific question?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so, request to attend, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions? And moving on, approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting?
Motion, we approve them?
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded to approve the meeting minutes from June six, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous, thank you. Is there a need for an executive session? I don't believe so. Any new business? Hearing none, unfinished business from previous meetings? Hearing none, any communications? Yes, Ms. Cragan?
A couple of communications. The DPW Day Art Show will have their reception on Tuesday, which is tomorrow, three o'clock at Fitchburg Public Library. We'll have all kinds of, you know, refreshments, and the kids' artwork is up, and again, it's a lot of Fitchburg students, so everyone is invited to that, not just the artists and their family. Also, on Thursday at Fitchburg Public Library, the summer reading kickoff starts, and that is going to have music and crafts, and they'll hand out packages, and it will be really wonderful. That is open to the, you know, the city, so that is going to start around four o'clock, and I think it goes, you know, past six, so it'll be a full, a full afternoon. So, would love to see school committee folks or my friends in the audience, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment, anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Communications, the Washington DC Grade Eight field trip are coming to bring us up to date. I know we followed you on Facebook, but now we're looking for the details. Washington is still there, the students all, the students all came back, so...
Quiet bus ride home.
And I talked to some of them, and they just had fantastic experience.
Yeah, it was a great trip. We had a hundred and twenty-seven students go, I had thirteen staff. The school nurse from Long Joe, Jackie Lassard, came with us, it was her first time going on the trip with us. We had a student with some medical needs that I wanted her to really attend, so she was able to come. We were able to do a lot of the monuments at night, so that freed up some time during the schedule to do longer time at the National Zoo, but we ran into traffic. The subway system was going through a safety plan or something, so the traffic on the highway getting into town took three times longer than it normally does, so we still missed time. So it was kind of good that we were able to get everything done the first night. We went to the changing of the guard, the Holocaust Museum, we, they were there for a good two and a half hours, going through the whole Holocaust museum, and the kids found that to be one of the most powerful experiences for them. We went to the Orioles game, they were very accommodating at Camden Yard, I was really thrilled. We had some students that, we usually get seats really at pie, and some students were having some anxiety about the, being way up in the nosebleed seats, so they were able to accommodate us and take really care of us. So that was really fun for the teacher that got to sit really close down on the field. It was an interesting game. It was a bench-clearing fight, which I've never seen at a game before, but, you know, made sure to tell the kids that they would have their suspensions and not to worry, you know. We came back, we, we came back to the hotel there, and then we were back in Fitchburg for six-thirty. One of the tour, sorry, one of the chaperones from Memorial has asked that we stop in New York City maybe and do the September eleventh monument, so we're going to see about adding that for next year, once we have permission to plan and kind of take a look at some more options, because there's time to kind of fit that in either going down or coming home the way we were doing it with the game on that last night. So, we're pretty excited. I want to get a jumpstart on the fundraising and get the kids all geared up. I've been talking to the seventh graders, and they're really excited about starting right away in September, so that's why I want to do this now, so I could have the summer to kind of get stuff lined up for them to do the fundraising.
Great.
Any, any questions?
Doug.
Yes.
Any chance that you could start early, try and get the laying of the wreath at the...
Yeah, yeah, that's another reason why I want to start now, so I can talk to Mayor Dina Tally about helping me out with that, because I'm not sure who to contact anymore. So I'll be in touch. They say it takes about a year to get that going.
Because it's great, it gets to be part of that ceremony.
Yeah, we're working on the Holocaust tickets now, because you have to, they won't, they used to do a year out, but now you have to do it so many weeks ahead of time, so we want to make sure we have the, we have the permission to do this, we can start getting the tickets for the Holocaust. That's really the, the main focus for the trip for the kids. You know, there's a lot of focus, but that one they really...
You can swing through New York, through that, the memorial, you might be able to swing by Statue of Liberty, too, which is right down...
We drive by, we see from the bridge, yeah. It's sad enough a day.
Seeing it from ninety, you know, from the cross Bronx is a little different.
Yeah, yeah.
And Pete's volunteering to Chaperone again.
Actually, Sally and Mrs. Cragan and Mrs. Flavin, yeah, she wants to go, too. Yeah, count, count us in, we will come. Absolutely. The other trip that we're looking at, starting to plan to, is our Grade Six White Mountains trip. It was a successful trip, the kids had a great time, they stayed in huts, they were able to go with Mr. Shalafow and really explore the White Mountains and take advantage of a lot of the science classes that they had to offer, and the kids came back, they were pretty tired, but they had a great time, so we want to start that, too, as well, get that going, with your permission, of course.
Mayor, I'd just like to add a, thank you. My daughter went this year, and I have to say, the level of organization is impressive. When you said they were leaving at six-thirty, those buses went out at six-thirty. And when you said you were arriving at five-forty-five, you arrived at five-forty-five. I mean, that was just impressive, and so well-run, so thanks, because that's a lot of work.
Huge shout-out to Wilson Bus Tours, they are so phenomenal, and the bus drivers we have, we've had Emil as our head bus driver, and he just, unfortunately, he was clipped by a taxi while he was out, while we dropped off, and we weren't even on the bus, thank God.
Oh, wow.
He had to, he was calling me, I gotta wait for the police, and it was just, I felt so bad for him because it wasn't his fault, and so that kind of put us behind schedule, but the other buses were able to come pick us up at the Jefferson Memorial, and, you know, the kids really were troopers, they're pretty flexible. You know, they're hanging out, talking with their friends, and finally someone realized that we'd been there for like twenty minutes, they were like, what's going on? We're like, okay, now, you know, we're going to head back to the hotel, that was the night of the dance, and the kids had so much fun at the dance, oh, they were crazy. I posted all the pictures on Facebook, if anyone's interested, on the Fitchburg Public Schools, Washington DC trip, so, yeah, it was a great time.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks for all your work on this, Jen.
Yeah.
Were you the one that posted something about the change, the guards who do the changing of the guards, or did I read that somewhere else?
No.
That's like an elite group. They live there, and there are all kinds of, I mean, anyone who's interested, Google it, and I read it and thought, wow, I had no idea that this group of people who do that is a very elite group with incredible ethical and kinds of restrictions and everything. It's really impressive.
They're all the same height and weight.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all like six feet, hundred and sixty pounds, and great shape.
There's only been a few women, too, that...
Yeah, but just very impressive, you know. For them to be able to experience that is really great.
Thank you.
Something you've heard us talking about many, many times is safe routes to school in a lot of different ways, and in, right now, we're in, we're getting ready to do some major work, the city is getting ready to do some major work at South Street Elementary School, and Attorney Pusiteri is here to talk to you about that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant Solicitor, how are you?
Thank you, yourself, sir. Just to be very brief, I think this is a project that has been before this committee on several occasions. The primary issue is, we are requesting all property owners, including the school department, to consider donating both, in this particular case, a permanent easement and a temporary easement. And if you have the drawings themselves, actually have a larger version, the permanent easement area would be at the South Street School, looking at the school, to the left-hand side would be that driveway area, heading back towards the parking lot onto the left. And, I'm sorry, am I saying that correctly? Yep. And then the temporary easement would be a small piece of the, the entryway of the right-hand side of the driveway along South Street. I don't know if the folks have any specific questions about the project itself. I do have several copies of this drawing, it might help clarify it for you, if you, if you need to see that.
Any questions from the committee, from the city solicitor?
Are you taking some of the land along South Street, like across the street from South Street School? I see that...
Yes.
Green line that's drawn on the map here, is that to put in sidewalks?
That's correct. It's going to be an improvement of the sidewalk that currently exists across the street from the school, and then that sidewalk will go all the way down to the corner of Electric Ave, and then wrap around.
Oh, okay.
Currently, there is not a sidewalk there until you start going up Electric Ave. There's a sidewalk there. Also going to be improvements in, in crosswalks, traffic lights, handicap-accessible walkways, and those types of things.
Much easier.
Yeah.
Certainly is going to improve the safety in the area, it's going to improve the appearance of the city as, as people come into the area there. And it should be a general improvement to the property as well for the school. So, what we have done is, we have circulated a number of documents that the state has prepared called Certificate of Donations, and I'm just asking for the school committee to entertain a motion to approve, Chair, to endorse the certificate of donation. That would alleviate the need of us having to do an appraisal and provide the department with compensation. I would say we have twenty-four properties involved in this project. We have, we have, or tomorrow night, we're going to be seeking to appropriate just about thirty thousand dollars. So, most properties will be somewhere around under a thousand. We've got some permanent easements, this one being one of them, another one being down on Old South Road, which will probably be a little bit more than a thousand dollars. So, we're not talking about a lot of money, but we are requesting that the department donate that land to the city.
When you get down to Old South Road, that doesn't show on here. We go right around the corner, is that what you're...
Sure, like, just...
At the traffic lights?
Yeah.
Where the sign is, and it's all grass.
Yeah, that area is being left. As a matter of fact, we inquired specifically about using that for parent drop-off, and the, this is a federal project.
Yeah.
The concept is it's safe routes to school.
Yeah.
It is to promote and encourage walking to school. Now, while we do have a lot of folks dropping children off in the area for school, when I specifically brought that area up as a great place for a drop-off location, that was not the purpose of the grant. So, that was the primary role. And second, the second rebuttal is where this project has been going on since 2014, it was a little late in the process to bring up a substantial change to the design. But we did bring that up, and certainly would seem to make sense to have a drop-off area.
But it won't be a drop-off area.
Say again?
But it won't be a drop-off.
It will not be a drop-off area.
But is the sidewalk going to extend all the way down to that grassy area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let me just triple-check you on that. Yes. It's going to come down, in fact, there will be a walkway that will actually almost dissect that area at its, at its widest point, and so there'll be other pathways through that area as well.
That's great, as I was, as I was looking at it, kids are going to be able to walk all the way up on both sides of that area of South Street, to the, if they're on the far side, the crossing guard will be able to cross, and, and coming up from that dressing area, they'll be able to just walk right up. I think that's great. I know, like, Sally and I have been involved in that quite since the inception.
Is this going to make Paul McNamara's life easier?
I don't think so. I think we'll still need them to, we shouldn't even encourage him to think it's going to be easy.
No, no, no.
It's a, it's a, it's a busy route in the morning.
Yeah.
In fact, I live in the neighborhood there, I don't come down Ellis Street, I just avoid that entire intersection, and I use the Electric Ave lights to get onto South Street, because we don't need another car in the morning, so. So, here's the certificate of donation, and again, I have one tonight, it's a very informal-looking document, it just needs to be signed from, I would suggest, the chair of the school committee.
No formal vote required?
I think we'd be best with one. We are distributing property at the school department.
So, we're calling this a certificate of donation?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Do I hear a second and seconded to approve the certificate of donation for the elementary school right-of-way improvements in Electric Ave, South Street, and Ellis Street? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous.
I'll bring it to the office, okay?
Thank you. I'll do it right now, if you want.
Okay.
Thank you. Got that bin ready. Get it.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's going to make it safer for our students. There you go.
And something that's been in the making for a long time, and then to finally see it come to fruition, and I'll use that as a...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's gonna make it safer for our students. There you go.
And something that's been in the making for a long time, and then to finally see it come to fruition. And I'll use that as a segue to Footsteps to Brilliance, which has been in the making for a long time. If you remember correctly, we were part of a federal grant competition. And a group of us, Mayor Wong and people from the CDC and the group, went to Boston and competed. And the, what we were pushing was this app that, you know, I had discovered and thought was something that could be useful, where it was an educational app for preschool and early grades that could be used on mobile devices. We got the grant, decided not to pursue it as a city, because that's really what they were encouraging, was a citywide literacy initiative. At the same time, it was part of the work of the North of Maine. So Paula and Eva and Kathy Mimi and Eileen and a whole group of other people, as they got more and more involved in the North of Maine initiative, really took the role of the educators in terms of developing a way that Footsteps to Brilliance could be part of the North of Maine initiative. And Paula has an update for you of the kind of work that's been happening. And at this point, we're gonna be looking at this. We've just been in communication. We had another presentation from the company that does this. And they've approached us again about a full-city rollout literacy initiative. And, you know, we'll be coming to you with more details on that. But Paula will bring you up to date on what's been happening so far.
Well, thank you. For the folks who are not part of our subcommittee, these are some documents, just to share with you. So the school department has taken on this early literacy as an initiative to better prepare all of our preschool students to come to kindergarten ready as pre-readers. And we've implemented the Footsteps to Brilliance program in all of our preschools. We work with the folks, Tom Sworowski, who's the facilitator for the North of Maine project, and Tricia Pistone, and the leadership and staff at Mock Head Start. And we've actually conducted a citywide training over the course of two days for all the preschool teachers together. I think it's the first time in a long time we've actually had community preschool teachers and our own public school preschool teachers together in this Footsteps to Brilliance application. We've purchased hardware, so they're little, small, I think they're called Nexus 7, I mean, it's gone, the little units that are preschool hand-ready. We have very preschool-looking tech tubs in every preschool classroom. There was a revamp with the technology application around Christmas time, so we had to reinstall all the software. So you have in your packets a graphic that is a Footsteps to Brilliance summary. Nope, it's in your folder. Yep, Beth has it. If you could wave that around. That's the data for our preschool students from January to the end of May. And the mission is, and what I shared with you in the separate little packet, Kathy Brady is our, funded through Title I, is our early literacy coordinator. And she's working with the preschools over at Tom and Mock. She collects data. She checks the back of the house to look at use, all that kind of thing. And she's published a quarterly newsletter. So the first document is Kathy's newsletter to help sort of hype up this early literacy. She's also started an early literacy webpage, so she's housing all kinds of additional resources for faculty and parents. And then we're including her in all of the work Eva Kelly does through Title I. Because this mission around early literacy is to ameliorate the issues. Decades of research demonstrates from households where there are economic challenges compared to middle or upper-class households, students have what amounts to about a 30 million-word gap. Students from economically-challenged high schools, homes, start school knowing and responding to and hearing 30 million fewer words. So their vocabulary is severely, significantly diminished. And this, as you can read from the data in a brief period of time, I think it's over 6 million words. So we're looking forward to next year having a full year to roll this out. If we can, and this was a conversation with the superintendent and Mr. Jokel, or with the founders of this program, if we can roll this out full-community-wide, that means we can actually help all of our preschools in the community. Private preschools, parochial preschools, et cetera. We can run this. We'll involve the library, all the preschool providers, daycare providers. It would be a significant asset to the community around preparing our kids to hit school with greatly improved vocabulary.
The city rollout would be that. So it would be, and then we'd go to, if you remember, I talked about zip code. If you're within the Fitchburg Public Schools' zip code, or Fitchburg, City of Fitchburg's zip code, you would have access to this. And then the company would provide us actually with the media and PR for, so that we would have billboards about this literacy initiative for the City of Fitchburg and things like that. So it would really kind of raise that whole idea up at a very public level to people who don't have kids in the school about this kind of thing that's going on in the Fitchburg schools and in the City of Fitchburg. So we'll be working on that. In terms of the issue, of course, would be the financing. But as we're looking at this financing piece, we believe that now it's affordable enough that we can partner with some grants and some foundations that might be able to help us meet our goal. But we, it was important to, we didn't know what this, how this worked. And the work that they did this year really is a test. And then, if you remember also, we were gonna try, I was gonna try to partner with Fitchburg State University. And the company's very interested in that, to have them implement it into their education program. So the teachers that are in the education program are actually using this same thing. So that's very attractive to the company.
I think the other thing to think about for us, if we fund it, is that it also gives, I would imagine, some actionable data before a student even comes into the kindergarten doorway. That could really help with intervention or could really help with planning.
What's the cost on this?
This year, we did it at a per-pupil subscription, one year only. And it was about $80 a student for the year. The Innovation City project, which is that whole zip code, is actually, it's a five- or a six-year proposal. So it's substantially more. But after you pass out the annual, the subscription, et cetera, it's probably, I think it was $15,000 to $20,000 more as a project, which if we can find some ways to support that difference, the cost-benefit ratio to have it available to the whole city is substantial, substantial.
They want us in this program. They wanna partner with Fitchburg.
We're good dance partners.
So.
You can see, the data is excellent.
Right now, it's costing us about $34,000 a year for what we're doing, which is reaching 150, 150 kids.
200, 250.
250 kids. For another $20,000 a year, we'd be able to reach the whole city, anybody who wants to participate in this. So, and that would look very attractive to some funders. And now we're actually coming to the dance, you know, after having had, you know, conga lessons. Because now we have some data in terms of what we could really do with this. So in terms of trying to get grant partners, last year, we kind of thought, this is a great idea. We'd like to do it. Now we actually have some research on it. And then I think what they said was if we partnered with them, they would, we could pay for the first three years and then they would, they would then keep us for two more years beyond the full payment as a five-year partnership.
Great. Any further questions? Thank you. Oh, yes, go ahead.
When, if you, if we were going to roll this out citywide, what is the, you know, the schedule or the calendar that we're aiming for?
I'd like to try for September.
In this September?
Yeah, we're gonna put a lot of energy into this this summer to try to roll this. This would be really kind of a very cool back-to-school initiative, a citywide literacy initiative for everybody.
Yes, Mrs. Quigg.
Well, I just have a comment. This Words Matter handout is absolutely fantastic. Do we have a version for civilians or the public? Because the precision of description is really engaging.
Well, I think Kathy designed that for the teachers.
Yeah.
And then is working on, again, a website as a repository that would be, and I think that's the last page of that little, just a screenshot of the webpage she's developing that would have information for general consumption. Work under, work in development.
Okay, 'cause again, for the folks who are watching, this is really important stuff. How many words should a child hear prior to age three? 30 million or more words should be spoken to a growing child from birth to 36 months. Well, what does that mean? What kind of talk? Can they enumerate the kind of talk, types of talk? Business talk being, "Pick up your toys, get ready for bed, brush your teeth," or "Where did you get that?" And it, this article, again, says, well, you know, every parent says that. I mean, we all say that. But what do parents say beyond that? How do you engage a child in a story? Saying, "What do you see?" Even if you're watching television, "What is that animal doing?" "What do you, what do you see right now?" And then having that back and forth, or serve and return. This is, this is really interesting. I had this experience with my daughter at the library today. She wanted to read to me the House for Hermit Crab. And so she read it to me. And I, she's going into second grade and I, that was a first. Like, "Thank you for reading to me." But I, I was aware of that back and forth that happens when, you know, you read a book to a child. And I just hope every parent, you know, we give them so many books and the books must be opened. So thank you very much. It's great to have Kathy Brady, you know, with this.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Okay, we have our four principals here for their school improvement plans. You should have a robust set of documents that they sent you ahead of time. I'm sure you've gone over them and read every word. I would encourage our principals to try to keep their presentations to a limited length, knowing that you have all of the other stuff. I haven't been very successful in doing that, but I try anyway. So with that, Craig, but I also don't want you to walk away feeling you didn't share what you wanted to with the school committee and the people at home. That's just a prelude. That's just to warm 'em up.
Good evening. Just a little different as far as my presentation this evening. Each spring and for the last eight springs, Long Joe, because we're part of the ELT community, part of our responsibility is to reapply for the ELT grant. So what I'm actually doing tonight is going through the main components of our reapplication process, which then becomes the foundational pieces of the school improvement plan, which will be revised and sent to Paula in a week or so. So under the, under the guides of the ELT initiative, there are certain areas that we have to touch upon each year, provide feedback to the committee. This happens to be a year that we also had, early spring, we had a team of six folks from surrounding schools within the ELT community, as well as people from the Department of Education who spent two, a day and a half with us evaluating our program, providing us feedback. So much of their response to us of what they observed was also built into this document. So a few of the pieces that are important for us to look at that I've included tonight is the design has to be driven and focused with school-wide priorities, use of data, additional time for academics, use for core instruction, differentiated support, additional time for enrichments, teacher collaboration, enhanced school culture, and the leadership is focused and collaborative. So those are the foundational pieces of this reapplication process that we go through each year. In your packet, you have a copy of our vision statement and our instructional focus, which was updated to meet the demands of the Common Core just a couple of years back. We will, we're kind of waiting at this point to see what MCAS 2.0 will look like, so that we may have to go back and reassess our vision statement to some degree, but also the instructional focus. But it's really primarily built around the success in the preparation for college and career readiness. And the instructional focus really is kind of a three-pronged approach between writing, reading, and then student discourse. The ability for students to explain their thinking, to engage in thoughtful conversations, to express themselves in writing, in clear writing, and then obviously be exposed to different genres of reading. So that's kind of what our instructional focus is built around. Our teachers work extensively as groups to really look at practices and strategies that can get our students to engage in student discourse about their learning, which is not always something that they do willingly at the middle school level. But we practice it, and with practice, we see that students are able to do it and do it extremely well. Thoughtful debates, teaching our students how to have a debate and disagree respectively is kind of a focus that we have in our class, in classes. And that's across all content areas. So this is a slide that's not unfamiliar. It's something that we've been focusing on for the last several years. And again, it includes our student discourse. The coherent instructional model really encompasses what each classroom should look like, what strategies and practices must be used, what the beginning of the class looks like, what the middle of the class looks like, what the end of the class looks like. And then the key piece of the formative assessment is really that ongoing assessment for understanding. How are the kids actually engaged in the lesson? And are they understanding what the teacher and what the other students are trying to share with them? So that's really the components of this piece in the backbone to all the work that we've been doing for several years. Jumping into this focused school-wide priorities, we did survey our teachers about a month ago or so. And this kind of highlights some of the pieces that came back, resonating throughout the entire adult community and things that we're going to be focusing on and working on for next year. Something that we did this year, in each of the last two years, we've always started the school year with an off-site team-building day. So we spend that entire day, we've done it at Camp Low. We did it once up at the boathouse up in Orange. And we bring outside facilitators that come in and work very closely with our staff around team-building. So this continued focus on community building and what kept coming back over and over again is this thought around isolationism. And if you know our building and how big it is, that is a serious concern. And I think within our profession, it's a serious concern that we start our day, we teach our classes, we move and we move and we move and we move. And there, before you know it, there's a month has gone by and you haven't talked to colleagues just down the hallway. So we are going to continue with this. Happy to say that I've got some dynamic first and second-year young teachers that were part of this ILT, our Instructional Leadership Team, and really took a lot of this on themselves and came up with some great ideas. So that's something that we're gonna continue to look at. The other piece that was, that resonated through that data is really having to differentiate for our professional development across our entire school community. We have experienced teachers with a wealth of information. We have brand-new teachers, and their needs are very different. So the teachers provided great ideas back to us around leveraging their leadership, their expertise, which we've done several times in the past, to really come in and provide that focused professional development. They talked about weekly mini-sessions around whether it's the use of the computer or Google documents. It could be anything, but things that a veteran teacher may be very familiar with, but new teachers aren't. So really leveraging our expertise in the building. And something that I can say for sure that we've lost is this bring-back-the-fun. You know, we have to strike that important balance between the demands of preparing children for college and career readiness with this thoughtfulness around having fun. And I'm not sure if any of you were able to see on, I believe it was posted on Facebook, our field day, which was around the Olympic theme. And we had a band that was playing the Olympic theme. We had the band play the National Anthem. The kids ran through the gym holding the torch, and the torch was passed each grade level. It was just a phenomenal day. The kids were completely connected to it, and we had a great field day. And really bringing that type of fun school-wide, so kids can have more opportunities to become connected to the school community, which causes, and kind of the overflow to that is more engagement in classes, better connected, less behaviors, and so on and so forth. So that's something that we're gonna really focus on. And the communication, this piece around communication, we've used some systems and protocols in the past. We're gonna bring them back so that we are able to provide that we are able to provide teachers with updated information. And most of this comes around new data or new information that comes in that is important around students. So, it, you know, we do, I think, a really good job with providing the big pieces of communication that need to be dispersed within the faculty, but really getting down to the nitty-gritty of what's happening with students and providing our teams, you know, appropriate feedback and appropriate information, because they have those students in class right now. So, those are the systems that we're going to look at to really work on. We've got a few slides here around, you know, it's, what we do has to be data-driven. You know, many of these pieces are just samples of data that we use. Our staff knows, don't come to a meeting to talk about students, to talk about curriculum, talk about assessment, unless you're bringing data with you. And they do an excellent job with this. And again, these are just examples, whether it is our use of Ames Web for math, for literacy, whether it's the use of these performance tasks. Our ELA department alone must self-score three writing assessments throughout the year, plus the performance task. They literally score thousands of documents each year, and then look at the data, share the data, and it's all based on the same rubric. The bottom graph here, and these are from our intervention classes, so not only we assessing students with our Ames Web, but we're also, each intervention program has its own assessment that we can really track. So, in this particular class, you can see that the beginning lexiles with 297, they ended the school year with a considerable increase. And these are benchmarked three times a year. These students are also progress monitored every two weeks. So, this ongoing flow of data is continuous. New this year and new coming up, even more expanded for next year is this use of behavior rating scales. You read the article today around suspensions and around student behaviors and around our proactiveness. Using this data, and this is just a glimpse of what it provides to us, this chart here is self-analysis, and it just provides students, and interestingly enough, how students self-reported and how we as adults reported them, they were very consistent. Sometimes you might think they wouldn't be, but across the board, we're about ninety-five percent consistent of what the children thought of themselves and how we were perceiving them in the classrooms. So, the first one, you know, with a normal risk, elevated risk, or extremely elevated risk. The second piece, the pro-social skills, which I think is critical for us to really look at, rates students with excellent skills, adequate skills, occasionally difficult, frequently difficult, and extreme difficulty. We have, in those bottom three categories, and this just is our fifth grade, pretty representative across our school, that about forty-five percent of our students are rating themselves as extreme frequent or occasionally disruptive. So, you know, these are, this is great data for us to look at, and this is great ways that we can define and refine our interventions for them and really work on, you know, we do the math, we do the reading. Now, we have to really look at those pro-social skills and give skills the ability, give children the ability to be successful socially and in the classroom. We are reconstructing some of our time within the day, and this just kind of highlights some practices that we've used in the past that we're bringing back. We tried to add a little bit more flexibility to the system. We didn't think it was successful, so we're going backwards and redefining and locking pieces of our schedule in to the schedule so that we're kind of commanding what happens and how it happens on a more of a trimester basis. Looking at, you know, obviously, our science department's aligned with the next-generation science standards. We're also looking at humanities and ELA. Been using the C3 frameworks and trying to get a handle on looking at that humanities piece. This core block provides our ELA teachers another opportunity to work more on the social studies pieces that we're lacking. So, this was feedback that we have received from you, and this is feedback that we've also received from our visiting committee this year that we're trying to address. We've got some of work, there's some that'll really define. Fifth and sixth grade is pretty much cemented right now. They have, fifth and sixth grade has social studies as a class in their schedule, so that's a great change for us. Seventh and eighth grade, we're really looking to define what those standards will be. Historically, it was world history. Now, it seems to be taking on of a more civics-based, current events-based, and other kind of pieces that we're waiting to be more closely defined, which doesn't seem to be out there right now. The C3 frameworks does give us some insight into where it's headed though. Looking at our enrichment opportunities for children, and Sally has visited us during our ELT block, kids really enjoy this time of their day. We're looking to connect some of these activities so that we can meet the needs of the students and provide opportunities for students to be part of the activities they want to and have greater access to that. So, realigning some of the activities that we have so that students all, you know, I don't want to overgeneralize, but if we offered fitness, many, many, many of our middle school students would be engaged. We don't have the space for that, so we're looking creatively on how to expand that. We've partnered with the YMCA. We've got thirty or so students that go down and swim every other day at the Y. So, there's some great partnerships that we're looking to expand those. And it works out perfect now, because unfortunately in the past, our block was right at the, their highest time for their membership. Now that it's a little later in the day, we have access to their gymnasium, fitness room, and the pool.
That's really fantastic. I didn't even-
Oh, yeah. The kids love it. They really do. They really do enjoy it. The teacher collaboration piece is, I think, very important for us, and we are continuing to do this. We use our coaches extensively. We're realigning it so that our ally coach is actually providing greater support now, because our fifth and sixth grade teachers, all of our math teachers are doing science as well. All of our ELA will be doing social studies. So, our ally coach will be providing some greater support for in-classroom instruction, kind of push-in professional development, and also give all of our math and science teachers an opportunity to engage in that work. The once-a-month community building piece has been great for us. The teachers really enjoy it, and that's something that we're going to continue to work on. And then, the leadership is focused and collaborative. Again, going backwards and looking at some of the successful protocols and systems that we've used in the past, bringing them back. And this is all based on teacher input that we've received. As I mentioned, you know, more school-wide activities, the community building piece, the leveraging of our adult staff to really bring out their expertise, their experience, and their leadership.
I have a question. We're sort of midway through, but the access to the Y, which also I know has a lot of Long Joe kids in the after-school program. So, we have thirty kids going down. Is there any possibility of that expanding on alternate days or something? Because it just seems like, what an amazing amenity, that of all of our schools, the geography of Long Joe really is phenomenal for the access to downtown Pittsburgh Historical Society Museum, YMCA and Library.
So, many of our students do go down in their drop-in center and the teen center once school is dismissed.
Yeah.
During the day, during this ELT block, we do try to keep it to a maximum of, just for supervision. Thirty kids just in the pool. We have another group that goes and uses their, the basketball court and the fitness room.
That's great.
Yes. Well, instruction, what about the swimming? Do they, why provide the lifeguards?
They provide the lifeguards, yeah. Yeah, and all kids have to start, parents are aware, they have to sign permission for them to go to the pool, and they also have to show some level of proficiency in the water before they can be accepted into the program. I think that we may have had one or two parents who said, my child isn't a great swimmer. This probably isn't for them, so we worked that out. But if they don't show proficiency in the water, then they wouldn't be allowed to go.
You're not teaching them swimming?
It's not, no. They are, and to some degree, they do, but most of it's rec-swimming.
Okay. Mr. Bell, Pierce.
Could I go back to the rating scales and pro-social skills, behavior rating skills? So, how often, this was, this is a graph from grade five, right? So, how often do they take something like that?
This was the first year that we did benchmarking this spring. Next year, we'll benchmark in the fall, winter, and spring, so that we can track progress over time. Students who are in the red or in this extremely or frequently difficult range will be in interventions, so that we can progress monitor them as well.
So, when those kids reported that-
Yes.
How quickly was there some kind of an intervention?
The majority of them were already in interventions. We've leveraged some of our Title I money. We hired a clinician to help out and teach. She uses the Second Step Curriculum, which teaches self-regulation, empathy. So, much of it is built around the school cares anyways, but this takes that. I think she started with forty-five to fifty. It ended up being about seventy.
Wow.
Yeah.
Do you see it make a difference?
We have seen some considerable improvement with many of those students. Some of those students continue to struggle, and they're, they fall into that extremely difficult, you know, children with trauma, children with other diagnoses that we're working with, families, wraparound services. We have eight clinicians from outside groups that come in and provide counseling supports to our students. So, we have, there's a much bigger picture of work that we're doing with families, whether we're working with the local court, using the ECPS model within our school to do that. So, we're trying to, you know, it's kind of bringing the whole community to work with some families that really, you know, the children are showing some extreme difficulties.
Could I ask a follow-up? What do you do during the advisory for thirty minutes every day?
So, the advisory is built around the responsive classroom model of developmental designs. So, there's a morning advisory, and then there's an afternoon. We shifted that just because we thought another time of the day, particularly for students who are chronically tardy. But also, that afternoon time, kids are in a different state of mind. So, we use the greet to share the chart, and then more community building in that afternoon block as well. But it's really built around the foundational pieces of responsive classroom developmental design.
Okay. Thank you.
I love to see that happening, because a lot of times with the morning meeting, we get kids feeling good, and then the afternoon, we send them home.
Right.
You know, I used to like to bring them back together at the end and talk over the day, and I think it works out very well. But I'm very pleased, and I know Jean, the social studies coming in.
Yeah.
And I know, we've looked for that for some time, particularly this coming year, the civics and the history and geography with the world situation, and election year this year for president, it'd be an exciting time for the seventh and eighth graders.
And I know you're looking at the C3 frameworks, but I guess a bigger question I would have is, is there vertical integration going on, a vertical discussion, you know, with high school teachers too? I mean, that, I'd be curious about that.
Well, there seems to be a significant shift right now.
Yeah.
At least with, you know, and again, middle school, you know, seventh and eighth grade was typically that world history piece. The high school, then they get more into government, which is later on, and Jeremy can speak to, you know, most of it's American history.
Right.
But it seems like, at least based on these C3 frameworks, that there's a significant shift there. So, we have News ELA, which is a great tool for us. It provides all nonfiction articles. It provides them at various reading lexiles. It has comprehension tests, and it also provides an opportunity for students to do performance tasks and write argument pieces and get really connected with that. You know, and again, whether it's current events, you know, it's updated, I think, every week.
I guess my primary concern in the last couple of years is just that you're gonna, is there, and I don't know if there is, is there this big gap between kids who are coming in who have had a very strong, like, they've got the factual piece, and they've got a lot of the historical content down under, you know, because they've been doing that, you know, in, say, in Memorial or some, and then, is that going to be a problem for the kids as they reach the high school? And I sort of know an answer, because I think kids work hard and they make up ground, but I just, I don't think we want to, you know, hurt anybody's chances of succeeding or doing well, so.
No, and again, I think that's a vertical alignment that we're going to be working on this summer, you know, with Memorial staff, my staff and McKay.
And McKay. Yeah, good. That's great.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Craig. Okay. Next on the list is Memorial.
Is that Mrs. Deintal?
Yeah, I need a little break there.
You're going to read.
Good evening, everyone, and to Mary Deintal. I think this is the first meeting that I've been at formally since you've been taking over here, so congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
What I did was, when I came back before the school committee in October, I just used the same format that I used then in this presentation and kind of updated the data. So, on the first page, you'll see the focus areas that we concentrated on for this past school year. And we were involved heavily with the DSAC on our learning targets, concentrating on vocabulary, ELL language objectives, and making sure the success criteria was spelled out so that the kids knew what they were supposed to do and how they would be successful, how they would be graded. We had a big focus on co-teaching, inclusion. And then, you've seen Mrs. Trigney with Kate Scopelletti and stuff several times before you, so that Health Wellness Initiative is still going on. Sally had a group here for one of our feel-up-to-play sixty walks around the school. So, that stuff, that will be ongoing, right? If you turn the page, the second one, the accountability data, this was something that, there's a lot of good news here. Typically, the state has, you know, five levels of accountability. Obviously, everyone wants to be in one, but to get above that twentieth percentile generally gets you to level two. We were a level three, and we also had two subgroups that were considered focus areas. So, based on the data from last year's PACT, we moved from nineteenth to twenty-seventh overall, which was a very good leap. We had the ELLs removed from post-focused designation because they had done so well, but the state decided to keep us at level three because our SPED subgroup was still in the lowest twenty percent of the state. So, the data that you see on these pages, in a lot of cases, what I've done, I bolded the students with learning disabilities, just so you could see how they were doing. So, even on this page here for ELA, you can see that there was a considerable gain between the CPI between 2014 and 2015, a very positive change. But it's just that 2014 CPI was so low, that it's still low comparative to our SPED peers. There's a slide later in the presentation that shows how we do compared to the state SPED, which is very interesting. In ELA, we also had a great decrease in the number of students with learning disabilities who scored in the warning. So, in 2014, it was fifty-four percent of it, and then in 2015, it was thirty-seven point six. So, that, again, good gain, but not quite enough to get us out of that, that level-three category. So, if you turn the page and you go to math, the gain for students with learning disabilities was not quite as robust in math as it was in ELA, and that's something that is typical for us. Generally, overall, it's not as great in math as it was in ELA, but you can see that we also did increase the number of students who scored in advanced in almost all those categories. And we did decrease warning, even with the students with learning disabilities. But when you look at 2015 warning, it's still sixty-six point one percent. So, two-thirds of our kids who have learning disabilities are still scoring in that warning category. And the CPI formula that the state uses, they kind of separate that warning category into low warning and high warning, and that adds, has a certain point value. So, when we get to the slide that compares the number of kids with learning disabilities for us versus the state, you'll see the difference, because the number of kids who score a warning isn't way off, but ours are low warning as opposed to high warning, so we're getting less points out of that deal. Then, if we look for growth for ELA in math, there is no SGP for science. Again, we're in the ballpark for ELA with almost all those groups. You can see math SGP for students with learning disabilities went down by seven percent for SGP. So, that indicates that we're having some difficulty in math for those kids, and it typically begins in grade seven. The gap between six and seven is particularly acute for that. And they're asking kids to do a lot more from what they did in sixth grade to what they did in seventh. So, that's across the board. The science all grades is slightly different, because we're only, they only do MCAS, and it's only- it's only fifth and eighth grade. There's no growth because there's nothing before it, there's nothing after it, so it's very hard to measure growth. Then, students with learning disabilities had a slight increase. We did increase advanced for students with learning disabilities as well as the Hispanic, Latino and white students and we decreased warning, but still in grade eight, eighty-eight percent of our students with learning disabilities scored in that warning category and in grade five, sixty-five percent. This is going down for both ELLs and sped and we did have five percent of our students with learning disabilities score in advanced, but those numbers are still concerning, obviously, that we have that many. Look at our PARC results, the percentage of students at each performance level. In PARC is slightly different. MCAS had the four levels and PARC has five. So, level four and five is kind of like what used to be proficient and advanced on their, on the MCAS, on the equity percentiles. And here we have by grade and subject comparing the school to the state. So, for example, in grade five, level four and five, we had forty-six percent of our students score between level four and five, whereas the state average was sixty-three. You can see across the categories there, how many scored in level five for the school versus the state, level four, level three and so forth. That level one, that's the lowest level and that's where a lot of our students with learning disabilities are, are scoring. So, again, this gap there, you can see like grade five math was much greater than it was. That's when students are getting used to middle school. The grade seven math, like I said, the difference between grade six and seven is particularly acute. You can see grade six math was fifty-one for the school and fifty-three for the state, but by seventh grade, that had fallen to twenty-nine for the school and forty-five for the state. So, that, that has been consistent for the past few years, whether it's MCAS or PARC, that what we're asking them to do conceptually in seventh grade is, is much more difficult than it is in sixth grade. The next to the last side, this is the one that I was referring to earlier, middle school, Memorial middle school sped versus the state sped average. So, these are the average of, of kids with learning disabilities in our school versus the state, kids with, students with learning disabilities and it's by grade and subject. So, you can see, for example, grade five ELA, we had eighty-six percent of our, our kids with learning disabilities score in warning. The state was seventy-nine, so it's not a huge difference. Our SGP in that particular grade was low, but you can see the middle column, the CPI, in general, it's starting a lot lower than what the state average is. So, that's where you're getting those things where it's low warning versus high warning and that gets into that calculation of what the CPI is, is all about. Again, that grade seven math, you can see thirty-three point one CPI compared to forty-seven point four. Grade eight math, again, thirty-three point three compared to fifty-two point four. In some cases, the SGP is comparable. In some cases, like grade six ELA, it's, it's greater than the state. Some, same thing with grade seven ELA, but math, it tends to be lower and our scores tend to be lower. Grade eight math, the, the state had eighty-four percent of their kids with learning disabilities in warning. We had ninety-two percent. So, that is kind of one of our focus areas that we have to do. So, the last page, you can see our focus areas, SLD scheduling, co-teaching, inclusion and pull-up. One of the things that we've done in the past is we've tried to schedule those kids kind of more around like the resources. So, if a paraprofessional was free, like B period, there might be twelve kids on IEPs in that B period class. Based on feedback from the teachers and the things that we've done, I would rather not do that. I would rather have three kids in my A period and three in my B and so forth, spread out. We can have better grouping strategies, that. So, we've really looked at our kids individually and tried to say, these kids are appropriate for co-teaching, these are inclusion, these kids still need pull-up. Second thing is effective response to intervention. One of the things that we were able to do this year was add a specialist, which frees up our Title I people out of that special cycle. So, that will give each grade level, another adult to help separate the kids, give them remediation, whatever. In the past, our RTI, we've had kids who are struggling to master grade level subjects. They might be below a standard, but then we've also had kids that need the basic skills and they've kind of been rolled all into one setting, which hasn't been effective. So, we're hoping that by adding these folks to this RTI block, we'll be able to separate those kids better. Lesson planning UDL to the effect that all the teachers saying, no, we'd rather have, you know, kids on IEPs in all our classes. That requires a certain focus on lesson planning overall. So, how are you gonna get all those kids to access your lesson? What is the success criteria gonna look like for each of those kids? We have all the second language newcomers. So, all those things have to get involved in that. So, we're, we're gonna be using the UDL framework, try to make sure that we have, that all those kids get access to that curriculum. And that really follows along with the, the learning target and stuff that we've been doing, we're just trying to make sure that now, okay, we know what the kids should learn, they know what it is, how are we gonna ensure that they all get access to that curriculum and the curriculum products? And I think this will go a little bit better than, than what we've done. I don't want to say it's, it dampens things, but I think if teachers looking at their schedule and they say, oh, this is my inclusion block and all these kids are in there, I, I don't think they necessarily lower expectations, but I, I think there's a certain mindset that may be like, they're not gonna be as capable or I don't have as many role models in that class or the grouping strategies have to be a little bit different because there's X number of kids on, on IEPs in there and it, it's understandable, but those are the things that we're trying to alleviate now. So, our schedule currently in it, hasn't quite been entered yet, but we're, we're working on, now, the largest number of kids on IEPs with support in a classroom now is seven. And in the past, we've had sometimes fifty percent or close to that in a classroom. So, that should help alleviate that somewhat.
With support means there's a parent in there?
A parent or a teacher in some cases. That could be the co-teaching model or an inclusion, so.
If you are sped, are you, does it follow that you, you have an IEP?
Yes.
That's automatic?
Yes.
How many do you have in the school? Ballpark, Fran.
Hundred forty maybe, six hundred.
And the total population is what?
Just a little bit under seven hundred. I think when we looked at between ELLs, former ELLs and sped, it was about half the school altogether.
If I might, the average in Fitchburg for students with IEPs diagnosed with disabilities is about twenty-two to twenty-four percent. The state average is between seventeen and eighteen percent. Some of our schools in grade levels have a higher percentage, some a little bit lower, but that's the average.
Yeah, we're about twenty percent, I believe, roughly, about twenty percent.
So, we're above the state average in that category as well?
Yeah. In the way the, the programs are set throughout the school were a little bit less because we're a little bit higher with the, the ELL newcomers, because that program's at, at the school. So, that would be higher than the district and the state and the sped's a little bit lower.
Now, that's not considered, that, that ELL person is not considered a sped person, or is he?
No.
No, not necessarily, but one of the things
But, the services are almost
But, one of the things that kind of bedoubles us is we have kids who are ESL and sped.
That's what I was gonna ask.
So, you have that competing dynamic of they need so many hours of ESL instruction, but you also have to meet the IEP, which hurts us in scheduling in a, a number of different ways. And you almost have to, I don't wanna say hand-schedule those kids, but really look at, you know, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. If you're gonna do this, then you, you can't do that. If you're gonna do that, you can't do that. So, it's, they're not, fifty of those kids, but fifteen, twenty, I mean, across the grade levels, it's, it's challenging.
Yes.
Can I ask, with, with all of this, do you have a different focus for, you said like the, the difference in the math scores is, is greater?
Yeah.
And, and so, it's more of a challenge?
Yeah.
Do you have a different strategy for addressing, you know, different subject areas, you know?
Yeah. So, the, we, we are fortunate that we have four Title I positions. So, we, we have two currently open because of retiring that. So, we're looking strictly at math for those people and we're gonna try to separate those into the upper grades. So, that they would focus, they would be math-certified folks by two-nine and their primary focus would be helping those seventh and eighth grade kids in, in the math area. The two that we have currently would probably focus more on the fifth and sixth grade around literacy type of things. So, that's what we're, we're trying to do and, you know, we, we have had like a, what we call a all-hands-on-deck PD with math, ESL and sped people. We use the half-days for that. We get, use some of the building subs. So, we're, we're trying to get there. And, you know, the, the data is showing, you know, positive trends and I think it's, you know, it's difficult to still be saddled with the, the level three designation, but to, to make an eight-point jump from nineteenth to twenty-seventh is, is, is good stuff. But, like everybody else who's come before you, you're not done. I mean, we haven't got our test scores back here, not like, you know, all these subgroups and stuff are all like in the clear. You know, it could take, all it takes is another, you know, twenty kids and you could be, that subgroup is now low, back low again. I mean, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's like musical chairs. You're not gonna be done until you get to like that, you're in the fiftieth percentile or something like that, which is gonna be difficult with, with the demographics here. But, you know, I'm hopeful the kids did work really hard. Again, like Craig can tell you or, or Laura said that when you're a, a five through eight school and you're taking PARC, every kid is testing. So, between the homerooms, I believe we had twenty-two separate groups to handle all the different accommodations between scribing, read to, second language learners, that sort of stuff. So, for like three weeks, that's, that's what we did and we used every single adult in this building, the specialist, the guidance counselor, I mean, everyone, steward, custodian and secretaries had a group that they were administering, they were proctoring some type of PARC situation. So, our poor fifth graders had to take three ELA separate PARC to four math and then two science. So, in that course of that, three weeks, they had to take nine tests. And I, I have to say on, because the MCAS is untimed as opposed to PARC, those fifth graders in, in science, when I was thinking like, they're, they're just gonna be toast, they're all done. A lot of them like, I need extra time, where can I, I mean, they were working hard to the bell. So, I'm hopeful that, that our, our scores did well, but I know the kids did work hard under difficult circumstances, so.
Yes.
Is there common planning time for, for teens or?
Every, every grade level has the same prep period every day.
Oh, wow.
What, what becomes difficult is we have a split seven, eighteen. So, two of those teachers have seventh grade preps because they have seventh grade homerooms and two of them have eighth grade preps because they have eighth grade homerooms. So, to give them common planning time with each other is difficult.
I'm sitting there, Fran, thinking how the difficult task of trying to manage students' learning style with teachers' teaching style and the sped teacher trying to provide all that information to the teacher, how a student learns best.
Yeah.
And then trying to schedule all those different styles of learning with different styles of teaching.
Yeah.
Just a tremendous task, so.
It, it's, you know, when you look at it from an organizational chart, it seems easy. Well, this person can push in with that person and that will cover that or these people can co-teach, but it just doesn't work like that. You know, it, it, it doesn't, there's, there's a lot that goes into it that, and we have to adjust on the fly all the time. Like every other principal here, we have huge transients. We get kids come in, especially since we have the second language newcomers that, you know, they come in at any time from any country that we're trying to fit in there. So, it's, you know, it's a challenge, but it's a very dynamic new environment and like Craig said, Craig said, bring the fun in and that's something that we've always emphasized here. That Fuel Up to Play is just one of them, but it's something that we, that we always try to do.
Well, your teachers have done a tremendous job these past, this past year with all of the growth, so hopefully it'll continue.
Hopefully, yeah, they did work hard.
Good job, Fran.
All right.
Thanks, Fran.
Thank you very much, Fran.
Thank you.
Jeremy, let's hear from the high school. One of the high schools. Good evening. How are you? Happy summer.
Some solstice.
Yeah. Day one.
Still daylight out there.
Yeah, I know. Buttons this way. So, really in ours, if you go to page nine, I know it's about a thirty-page document. Page nine is, is really what we consider to be the one-page summary of all the different, you know, data points and, and other graphs and charts that are in there that describe the different initiatives and goals that we have at Fitchburg High School. We have spent a lot of time actually on the strategic objectives this year. We had students provide input in our school-wide writing prompt this year. We, we've probably taken two or three professional learning circle meetings and faculty meetings to really take a look at specifically refining those goals and making them specific to what we want to try to do. So, I just have a few slides that will review them. You can see that page is essentially the strategic objectives, just cut and paste it out in, in, into the, into the seven items that we want to focus on. We had had six previously. We also spend a lot of time, as a high school, we have to do, school improvement council focuses a lot on the school improvement plan, so that, that group of teachers, students and, and parents have spent pretty much one, every one of our monthly meetings, at least a piece of it, looking at the school improvement plan and trying to revise it and update it. So, for goals in one and two, they, they really primarily focus on instruction and curriculum and analyzing assessment at the high school. And so, the specific thing, tasks that we will undertake, you know, we developed a teacher toolbox this year. Jennifer Scott, our Title I literacy coach, really took the lead on putting together all the different resources that teachers might use with our instructional framework, which we boil down to essentially six key strategies. It's in, it's an unbelievable and, and growing and living electronic document that is folders of just hands-on, you click it, you want to do a collaborative group activity, you click that folder and there's about forty of them in there with a little description of what it does. You know, you want to do a writing to learn, again, you click it, it's right there, there's lots to do. So, we just unveiled that in May, so really looking to get this, the year off to a good start by using that in our professional learning circles. We moved to open classroom, which requires that all teachers visit at least a, a colleague's classroom two to three times over the course of the year. We have guiding questions that they do and then there's a feedback process. We targeted again towards that instructional framework idea, but ultimately that the goal being that you're sharing best practices, you're picking something up or you're giving some advice here and there and it's all, you know, specific to the teachers that are doing that. We did lesson studies this year right at the end of the year, so again, the feedback in that from the English and math teachers that participated was amazing. They were really excited about, you know, the, the impact of that. So, again, we're gonna take that and move it into next year as well as a promising practice for everybody. And then we do professional learning circles twice a month, twice a month, every teacher does. It's mixed groups, but that's looking at our school-wide issues, topics, data points that everybody can have an impact on. So, so it can vary from attendance topics to looking at, looking at writing with protocol. It can look at, you know, large data such as MCAS or AP results or break it really down to, you know, very specific kind of classroom things. So, we're lucky that we have that process in format at the high school. I think it, it works well for us. For goals three and four, you know, these are the things that we have in place that, again, we're promising activities or things that we are initiating for next year. So, we started English, et cetera, and math plus as an intervention model for English and So, we started English, et cetera, and math plus as an intervention model for English and math. Not, not specific to students with IEPs. We have close to three hundred there, about two eighty or so. We, it's not that, and it's not ESL necessarily either. So, it's any student who's been identified using things like the early warning indicator system, or PARC results, or, or teacher feedback, that could really be, help, you know, in support in addition to their Algebra I and geometry class, or the English nine and ten class, with this extra class that's roughly five to ten students in size. Very specific around kind of filling in the gaps, trying to find out where the issue is. They use Play-Doh for some of that. There's these intervention packs that they can use online, and then direct instruction and support. So, it was promising. We had it go in second semester of this past year. But we're starting out with four sections of that for next year for both of them. So, it's a, it's a big commitment, you know, in that our teachers are assigned to these roles. But it's a need, and we, and we have to do it. We'll continue with math modeling. We have four sections running, that's a dual enrollment class, to avoid remediation at the college level. So, students who maybe have been identified coming into their senior year as someone who would need to do a remedial class in college, we're now able to get them the math modeling class as a senior. So, that when they enter into Mount Waukesha Community College, if that's where they choose to go, they go directly into credit-bearing math classes. So, we have roughly eighty to ninety students in that. Many of them, you know, do attend the Mount, so it's a very practical class for us. It's kind of a win-win-win, you know, the Mount, Fitchburg High School, and number one, the students. So, we've been very happy with that, that program. I heard Fran talking about it. We started an ESL teaching team to complement our other teaching teams, like School in a School, STEM Academy, Honors Academy. And it had some strong first-year results. We're adding a special ed component this coming year, and a second ESL teacher. Because our, you know, we're over a hundred with our ESL students, and many of them do have IEPs. And that's also a tricky thing to diagnose sometimes, especially with, you know, a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old student who's a newcomer. And, you know, is it the language, or is it learning disability? Or is it just gaps in being in formal education? I mean, there's a lot of sort of, it's like, it's like that soup. What was the soup commercial? There's a lot in there, you know? No, not soup, the tomato sauce. Was it ragu or pr- right? It's all in there.
It's in there.
It's all in there. So, I think that that helps though, having six or seven people focusing on it. And adding the special ed piece is really, we're truly excited. Andrea Hayman is a special ed teacher, and she just completed the TESL program. So, she's now certified, so it's just, couldn't be better. The STEM Academy is adding an honors component, and that was for us hearing from the eighth grades, you know, from descending schools, that this would be great if you could add an honors, at least one section of it, of the four that are offered. So, you know, we're pretty excited. We planned that for really the whole year with the team. We met monthly about it. So, we're excited to be doing that this coming year. This SWS is growing, they want to add more kids, which I think is a positive. You know, we're adding AP courses that we hadn't previously offered, like Computer Science I and European History. And then the enrollment registrations are very robust for both of those. So, so that's not typically the case, so we're pretty, pretty happy with that. And then we're adding honors robotics. And this is like just a real scratching of the surface of many other things. But I think some key ones that, that will be in place next year. For goals five and six, they really focus on, six is brand-new for us. And like Craig said about the article in the Sentinel today, we actually have been working on this all year, and that data was based on 2014, 15. We've reduced outside suspensions by over a hundred already this year. So, so I think we're on track. We have a lot of work to do though. And, and so, again, we spent a lot of our faculty meeting, especially in the student response time, towards improving attendance, focusing on, you know, having students have an intervention in the, for behavior that ensures a safe and orderly environment, an academic environment. But also, you know, supports that student to maintain, you know, their academic progress and, and learn from the situation. So, we're looking at a lot of different, you know, other schools, we're communicating with a number of them. In fact, Tom DiGeronimo and Jen Fisher from Long Joe spent about five hours today in Tom's office, just going over Lowell's program, Student Handbook, Brockton's, Haverhill's, Cambridge and Latin, looking at our own data and trying to figure out, you know, ways to, to address this. And in addition to what has been done already. So, we plan to hit a number of those topics that you can see there. Adding attendance incentives, that came from the students. We had done a little bit of that, but they really felt like more quarterly process would be better. So, we're gonna do that. And that comes directly from student feedback on the writing prompts. Many of our teachers received engaging students with poverty in mind the last day of school, which is great, and they're gonna be participating in the summer reading around that. But also, we'll be doing that throughout the year in the PLCs. And you can see some of the other things there. So, goal five, you know, certainly one of our major goals is initiating and maintaining and continuing the progress with advanced placement, pre-advanced placement, pre-pre-advanced placement. So, that's a data chart, you know, that, that's been relatively recently updated, at least with the number of testers. And we'll be receiving our AP results that first full week in July. And, you know, everybody's excited about that, the teachers, the students. Our goal was a hundred fifty qualifying scores. In fact, at a conference that Andre and I attended back in Rhode Island with Mass Insight a few years ago, and I think we have a really good shot of that. And, and, you know, that would also complement another goal that we set back then of reaching ninety percent graduation rate for four years. And we've been increasing it every year with a middle line there. We had our highest grad rate last year, and we're expecting to continue that this, this coming year. We'll find that out. Usually, that's about an October release, you know, you get a chance to kind of, we just had a girl finish today, in fact. She, we, we did the cap and gown photos and everything with her grandma, which was good. She finished her Play-Doh class, so it was perfect. So, we'll be doing that throughout the summer, and then you revise it, you know, before October one. Same with dropout rate. I mean, you know, that's another major emphasis in, in the specific details of the, the at-risk programming and supporting students, because ultimately, we want them in school. You know, and Ray, Ray's School is a tremendous resource to the students at Fitchburg High School, and amongst many others, I know that, because it allows them to continue that progress, even if the traditional comprehensive high school like we offer is a tough, tough fit for them. So, it's not wrong, it's just what's the best way to get you there?
Did I drop our rate to one point three?
Yeah. Below the... Which, which we had set a goal of, you know, surpassing the state average, you know, being, being better than that. And, you know, that's all, that is, one point three is working with Goodrich, working with families, working with five people talking about one kid, and what's the best way? You know, having kids come in in the summer and doing Play-Doh, having, you know, Nanette every day after school, do, I mean, there's, there's, again, I don't want to overdo it, but there's probably fifty different things that'll go along sometimes for a small handful, you know, occasionally of students, even one. But, but again, I think that's the staff, the teachers and the administrators that I get a chance to work with, who really do an unbelievable amount to make sure that a student has a plan. And, and even with the ones that are in the one point three, we're calling them, we're getting them back. When I went to Goodrich's great graduation on June second this past year, there were five or six that will be now categorized as five-year graduates. It took them an extra year, but with having that available to them, they were able to get that done. And so, you know, we may not see that on our data, but it doesn't matter. You know, ultimately, they get to, to having, you know, a little bit more of some doors open to them for opportunities in their life. And you gotta have a high school diploma at bare minimum.
Wait, Jeremy, I have a question on that, on our, what, what was it about 2012? That spiked to four point seven?
Um, 2012, I blame it on principle, for sure. I think it was, you know, I was relatively new.
Really?
Well, I mean, I'd be honest with, I gotta take responsibility, you know? So, I think that I was relatively new to the school, finding the way. And, and we hadn't identified a number of strategies yet. So, so I would say really ultimately, you know, we learned some things that year. I learned some things that year about what we really need to do in order to make sure we're maintaining a focus on every kid. Because I can tell you what happens at our, at our environment is it can be very easy for kids to just kind of disappear. They're seventeen, eighteen years old at that point, a lot of them, sometimes nineteen. And, and so, they're not even necessarily living at home. You know, they're, the kids that are really at risk and struggling, they have a lot of things going on. And so, you gotta keep about ten sets of eyes on kids and be focusing on them all the time. And, and meaning like weekly, you know, really looking at it weekly, if not daily. And so, you know, I think that what happened that year was just, we had a good, and, and four point seven can be thirty, twenty-three instead of thirteen. You know, so it, it can seem like a dramatically different amount, but it's probably eight or nine or ten kids. And so, and I think it was in that year, I think it was twenty-three. That's in my mind anyway, and I can look it up and tell you. But, but again, I think that what we try to do, what we're doing a better job of now is really using tools like Play-Doh online learning, like being aware of attendance situations really quickly, and coming up with an attendance contract and plan where the student now has an incentive to chip away at whatever their huge hole is and get back on track. And so, you know, this, this, for example, this past graduation cycle, we had about fourteen, it was fourteen students who did not finish because they failed classes. And usually, it's related to attendance issues or whatever. But we've already got four who have since, in the last week and a half, gotten their diploma and earned it, just by being, working with us, getting that, that extra Play-Doh class done. The other ten are already set for summer school with the summer school program that we start on the sixth, and/or there's two that are still in place, that are working on those right now. And I would assume will be done in about a week and a half. So, it's that kind of just being on top of the situations as they are arising and changing literally by the minute.
You know, that, that's phenomenal, what you've, what you've done, that one point three. You're on, you're on a track to zero it out, buddy.
Isn't that what we brought in school within the school also? Yeah, we had the, this, I think, we were working on things too.
That's impressive, right.
Like the freshman teaching teams. And putting Play-Doh in place. That was new to the district the following year. You know, being able to add things like, you know, we have an after-school program for attendance recovery that runs every day, you know, Saturday schools we've added in. Yeah, I mean, the fact that we're able to, we've been able to be lower than the state average, that's our goal.
Significantly lower.
Be lower than the state average is certainly, I think, you know, a great success for the, for the faculty and students at Fitchburg High. Because it is a, and parents, you know, it's a real collaborative effort. There are kids that just, you know, they have a hard time seeing it through, you know? And so, they need a lot of help getting there. And, and as I said before, if you don't have a high school diploma, I mean, it is, you're up against it. You know, it's a lifetime challenge you're gonna face.
It's not, it's important to point out that it's not just one thing.
No.
And, and I think you're, you're being very gracious by taking it on the chin for the four point eight. But that's okay, you can do that. But if you look at the school within the school even, you know, one of the big things there, so many of those kids in freshman year didn't matriculate and become sophomores. If you, if you go into your freshman year and you don't make it and become a sophomore, it gets more and more difficult to keep coming to school. And, and the tendency is to drop out. The first year of the school within the school, some of those kids, if you remember, had some of the best attendance in the school.
And they graduated this year.
And they just graduated this year. And almost all of them, except like four or five, became sophomores. Success breeds success. Some of them have never, had never tasted what that tastes like, to actually make it. So, it's really the hard work of that team of teachers, of all the other teachers, of you, of your, and you're right, ten eyes, twenty eyes, it's having the eyes on it, because it's very easy, I was a high school administrator, for kids to just slip through the cracks. And before you know it, they're gone, and they become a statistic. And the really, those three slides between AP, graduation, and dropout, you have to look at data sets. The focus in the past week has been on the data set of the suspensions. In order to really know what a school is about, you have to look at all of the data sets and understand that it's all related, and it's all interrelated, you know? And then you have to put personalities on things. Fitchburg High School and Long Joe are not just data sets. They're people, you're hearing them tonight, who every morning show up at that school, trying to keep every kid in school, and trying to figure out what they need and give them what they need. And sometimes what they need is not always, you know, the easiest, anyway.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And I mean, you know, the students, it's, you know, as we move along, I mean, our outcome goal for every kid is, is this kind of thing here, you know? And, and that's including technical schools, that includes the armed forces, that includes, you know, private schools, public schools, two-year schools, four-year schools, some post-secondary opportunity and option. And, and we're very proud of the fact that, you know, our students are accepted to a wide range of these post-secondary opportunities. When a student comes to me and says, hey, I'm joining the, the United States Army next year, you know, I, I'm thrilled for that student. Does it show up on our, our state report about, you know, the rate of students attending colleges? No. But that's what's right for that student, and that is a positive step, they're serving the country. So, you know, as Andre said, sometimes these data things, they, they, they counteract each other, and they can, and they can raise issues that aren't even there necessarily. And I'm not suggesting that about the suspension thing. We are gonna work very hard around that. But, you know, we want students to have a wide variety of options when, when they graduate from Fitchburg High School. And, and, you know, I think that that's happening. And this is just recent acceptances from our, our last two classes. And so, you know, kids are going to a wide range of places and doing a lot of different things with their Fitchburg High diploma.
To that point.
Yeah.
This is for you and the superintendent. I'm just curious, I had a couple of folks ask me, the graduation, as usual, was outstanding.
Yeah, thank you.
We didn't, we didn't say where they were going, or whether it was into the workforce, into the military.
Sure.
What, what school they were gonna be attending. I, I just, we used to do that, I'm, I'm not sure.
None, none. We haven't since I've been there. And the only thing I would say to that is, the, the students, you know, they're eighteen, nineteen years old. And so, I've even had the experience numerous times. We have the Scholars Banquet for the students who run the Gold F. And, and we do it there, you know, we recognize their post-secondary choice and what they're planning to do. The, inevitably, two or three will approach me at the podium, hey, I'm not going to Salem State, I'm actually going to Fitchburg State. Okay, so, not going to Salem State, so they change their minds quite a bit.
Okay.
And, and I think also, our, as we've talked about, we have talked about this. To us, the focus is, you've graduated from Fitchburg High School, and you've earned that recognition of being a Fitchburg High School graduate. This is about that, this is about that for you, this is about that for your family. As I said that night, June third, many of our students are the first high school graduate in their family. So, we want to emphasize that that is the, the focus of that evening, that you are graduating from high school, and now you have lots of options. And we do capture this in, in Naviance and different tools that we use to, to collect the data. But, and, and again, it's not to, you know, suggest that it isn't important, their post-secondary plan, but we really want to emphasize how important and positive it is that you're graduating from high school together and as a group of the class of 2016 or fifteen or seventeen coming up. Positive note there too, we just were updated that Gabby Upson has, has earned a Girls Nation opportunity from, from Girls State, the Boys and Girls State just got back this weekend. So, she'll be going down to the President Obama in July in Washington.
Can you take a minute and just explain, because people are watching at home, and that, first of all, what is Girls and Boys State?
Yeah.
And then what is the, the Girls Nation?
So, Girls and Boys State are sponsored by the American Legions of the United States. And every state has a, a week-long symposium at a college, I think. In Massachusetts, it's been at Stonehill, at least recently. And so, they come from all over the Commonwealth, and they go down to Stonehill. The boys and the girls have their own separate kind of experience. And, and what they do is they, they, they sort of emulate the government operation. So, there's senators, and there's representatives, and there's auditors, and there's different things. So there's senators and there's representatives and there's auditors and there's different things. And they all work together about learning how government works specifically, and then they actually choose to pursue different posts. And so ultimately, what happens at the end of the week is the delegations vote to, to send a member to one-on-one that would then represent Massachusetts at Girls and Boys Nation, which happens in Washington in July. And so in the past several years, now, we also got a recognition as a school, we had twenty-nine students attend, which is very high. And we have a guy, Dick Vaughn, I don't know if folks know him. He's just, he's a, he's an unbelievable advocate for students. And he does a tremendous amount of work to create these, to help create these opportunities for our kids. So a lot of credit really goes to him. So we had twenty-nine students down, down there last week, they did an amazing job, you know, from all accounts. I got an email from Dick just yesterday that they were recognized as a group, you know, as a school down at Girls and Boys Nation. And then we even had, so Gabby Upson got the vote to represent the, the girls from Massachusetts. So she'll be going to DC, and, and we had, we've had Michael Richard, Isaac Nelson, represent Boys Nation from Massachusetts, just in twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen.
This is our third or fourth Fitchburg High School student.
Third since I've been at Fitchburg High in five years.
That's pretty great.
It's unbelievable, it's really great.
Chosen by their peers from across the state.
By the students that attend, you know.
Can you spell her last name, please, Jerry?
U.P.S.O.N.
It's already posted on FPS First, two hours ago, so when you left the room, you were posting this.
I slapped it up there. The, Shalane Gordon also was voted state auditor, you know, by, by the girls, which doesn't, she doesn't go to DC, but still a huge achievement and a very positive, you know, recognition for another amazing student. We had an unbelievable group go down, I know you were there at the send-off, the mayor and, and Andre, and they were really excited. It's, it's, it's inspiring opportunities, and I think that's a lot of what goes on in the Fitchburg Public Schools in general and certainly at Fitchburg High School. Kids just have all these opportunities, I've worked in other schools, didn't even know what it was, I'll be honest with you. At high-performing schools, didn't even know what Boys and Girls Nation was, and, and Girls State, I mean. So, I mean, these are the types.
I know what it is, and I am blown away, in five years, three kids won the nation.
No, that's unprecedented, I think, probably not.
We haven't gotten anything.
No, I don't, I wouldn't think so.
How about that?
It would be interesting to find out if there's another school in Massachusetts that in five years has sent three students to represent.
I wonder if President Obama is starting to recognize the name Fitchburg.
He might be like Fitchburg.
Put Vaughn on that, will you?
Well, he had sent me something today.
Find out, yeah.
About the Fitchburg High recognition, so I'll get more on that and I'll share it. You know, as I said, and I, and I know, I'm trying to keep it within the timeframe too, but, you know, our last goal really is about public perception, representing Fitchburg High School as positively as possible in the community. We had set an enrollment goal as a high school about four years ago to reach twelve hundred, we've surpassed that. So we've adjusted things, and we're doing different things, there's lots of different activities we do. Having that new sign is an amazing resource, you know, to be able to update different, different activities all the time, highlight positives. You know, we, we did an open house for grades five through eight, April twenty-seventh, you know, we're kind of widening the net to not just eighth grade and seventh grade, but really anyone in middle school, because, you know, I guess that is when you start to think about the next step even, you know, a fifth-grade parent maybe. So we wanna make sure we're a part of that conversation always, you know, about the good things and these great opportunities that are going on at, at our school. So that's some of the overview info, certainly any questions that you also have, I'm glad to answer.
Great job, thank you. No, go ahead, yes.
Can I come back to the vertical integration piece? I mean, how, how, how much is, are teachers aware of what's been taught at the eighth-grade level? And like, in terms of like duplicating any kind of content, or do you feel like there is that communication? Is it different from every middle school?
It's definitely very strong in math, I think it's pretty, it, it's, it's very good in English, I would say. And it's, it's developing in, in science has done more work, I would say, in the last two years around that. And then I think in, in, in social studies, there's still work to be done, you know, as Craig mentioned. Because to your point, you know, we have world history in, in, in freshman year. So we don't wanna do the same things necessarily that's going on, that's gonna be going on in the middle schools. So we have work to do there, for sure, but I, I would say math is in a tremendous place. They've done a lot of work, and I think it's a, really a staircase model. I mean, you know, you kinda want it to be thirteen stairs and not ten stairs, because basically you're on the same one for two or three years, or doing the same book, or doing the same units, or this kind of thing. I think English is also really pretty closely aligned as well, and the Common Core certainly gives us the, the blueprint for that. I, I think, you know, my own opinion is, social studies has been that kinda outlier subject area to some degree with, that's been harder to, to, to really make sure that those things are in place. Like, in grades nine through twelve, it's, it's seamless, you know, we have the different courses and it works very well. So I think we have some work to do there, you know, between the middle school and high school. But, but, you know, hearing just what's going on at Long Joe and Memorial, you know, knowing that that's in, in, in the works, that's gonna allow us to be able to then, all right, let's sit down, let's get a group of eight and nine, or seven through ten teachers together, and really look at the sequence of it and make sure that, you know, we're not replicating the same writing assignment or replicating a similar, you know, primary source documents or whatever, so that students aren't, I think you had said it before, they're not, you know, bored by it or, or finding it, you know, turned off because it's the same stuff.
Because science really had a huge change, right, so the science frameworks have changed. Does that impact you guys now as the, as they come into the high school, or?
You know, I think science is, is really the only MCAS one that has not changed, because, you know, we have MCAS. And so it's still MCAS in the middle schools, so there's some necessities around that, obviously, for the middle school levels. You know, for us, we, we have, we have the focus of, you know, we have to do earth, we have to do some life sciences and we have to do some earth sciences. And, and so the students are essentially required by the Mass Corps to do that, to do that over the course of their four years. So, you know, I know that there's been quite a bit of, of vertical team meetings between, and Mass Insight has helped us with this as well. Our department members like Shelley Romero and, and some of them, who, she's our department facilitator, who have met with some of the eighth-grade teachers, I don't, I don't know their names specifically. But they learned a lot from each other, definitely, and it was an eye-opening, I think, you know, I think the key, for the positive being, it's been an eye-opening experience there, and so they've since been able to align a little bit more specifically to, to not duplicate.
Yes.
I, I just wanna commend you for, I don't know, recognizing where the, the drawbacks were and, and, you know, focusing your efforts in those areas. Specifically, when you were talking about the, the math class that you have with the, with Mount Wachusett. As a, as a college professor, it's really difficult to say, for me, to say to a student, and then you, you're gonna be taking this math class, but that's not gonna count toward the hundred and twenty credits that you need to graduate. That's gonna prepare you to take this math class, and that's difficult to say. So if they're taking that class at the high school level, then we know when they get to us, they'll, they'll be prepared for, for college work, and that's huge.
Yeah, I mean, we know that the research suggests if a student takes that one remedial class, that they're tremendously reduced in the graduation rate at the college level. So, you know, we wanna remove as many of those barriers as possible. And, and, you know, we're thrilled to be doing that, I mean, we have the Honors Compact with Fitchburg State, we do the dual, a lot of dual enrollment work at Fitchburg High in our English, math, science subject areas with the Mount. So, you know, we just try to have as many opportunities there as possible for a student to leave the high school. Our mission, career and college ready, you know, and that's one of them, for sure. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Appreciate it, thanks, thanks very much, have a great night.
It would hard, be hard for me to say that we save the best for last, because they're all the best.
Yes.
But the fact that Ray has stayed here so long, I have to say something to make him feel better.
Next year, you'll be first.
Yeah, there you go.
Switch it around, right?
It's nice to hear what the other schools are doing, so that's kinda nice.
Yeah, so Ray, thank you so much, and the end of your first year, so this is a very special report.
You know, in listening to a lot of this, I think Fitchburg Public Schools kinda sorta takes it on the chin sometimes in the newspapers and stuff, but when you look at the graduation rates, the way they're trending, the dropout wa- rates, the way they're trending, something's going on that's right. And, you know, the newspapers really have to celebrate that better, because everything's moving in the right direction. And if you judge a, a district solely by MCAS scores or PARC scores, you're really missing out. And, you know, those are indicators, but they're certainly not everything. June second was a highlight, because a hundred and twenty Goodrich Academy students got their diplomas. And that's really, really nice. And then we have a school improvement plan to say, okay, how do we do better? And how do we make sure that more people can, can finish and, and enjoy that, the celebration? I'll read it for you, but on page eight, we have our mission statement. And the, the important thing for me in our mission statement is this one part. "Our school is founded upon the belief that all students have the right to learn at their own pace and in a manner suited to their unique abilities." And I think that's what drives our school, and that's what I think the focus of our school improvement plan was all about. And I am, I did take some, some notes on what the other schools are doing, so I can add some other stuff too. But to highlight what we really wanna do, hopefully you got that sheet. And, you know, we wanna make better use of online and blended learning tools. Our social studies teacher, Brad McNamara, makes unbelievably good use of Newsy LA, iCivics, and other tools. Some of the other teachers are using the Newsy LA, we call it Newsella, a lot better. And because kids do like to learn online, because that's part of who they are, but they do need to be directed with that, and they do need to see what are valid resources as opposed to what comes up on a Google search. And as, as they learn those skills and as they see some of these things, they're fascinated by it. And as we look at what kind of tools we can use for the online courses better, that's gonna make that a little bit easier for the teachers to use that in a blended way, and also for the students to be able to do that. I think some of our students come to Goodrich, and you'd be surprised, they're not necessarily self-motivated. And so we're trying to find online tools that can help them be motivated about what they're learning, and it's not a chore. And, and I think sometimes, sometimes that's the case, and it's a matter of being able to watch them. We're looking at revising our curriculum maps so that they're in sync with the new and revised state frameworks, particularly science, as that comes online. Ms. Gogan is very excited about trying to use those, she's an unbelievably gifted science teacher, and if you ever get a chance to come and watch her, please do. She makes physics fun for these kids, she makes chemistry fun. Fitchburg State has a great time hosting her, her chemistry classes, five times a trimester, and it's because of the passion that she puts into it. And, and I think she's right on top of, of the frameworks and, and working to, to make sure that we're with those. We're gonna be working to make better use of social media tools, to reach out to parents in the community, so we can get more people on the school council, and more, more opportunities for services and, and stuff for, for the kids to do. Most community agencies, when we've asked them, have been very good about coming in. DCU came in and did a lot of units on financial literacy with our kids this year. And our faculty would spend a lot of time in those financial literacy units too, 'cause like, oh yeah, I need to know about this too. And just having the sense of, this is what goes into that, these are some of the job skills you need to get into banking, those were really huge. And when we had, UMass Extension came in and worked on nutrition with our kids, and just showing those, showing the kids, hey, these are some easy things you can do, and this is why you need to be eating these foods as opposed to fast foods. And, and this is, this is the amount of fat that goes into your, you know, you know, meal number one, on wherever, wherever you're, you're gonna be. And kids being able to, to put that into, into perspective, you know, and having some of the social agencies that are nearby coming in and saying, hey, these are some of the services that we can provide you, because our, as our kids are learning to advocate for themselves, they learn to, they need to learn where to advocate for themselves. And, and I think, you know, again, the city agencies have been fantastic, the state agencies have been fantastic. Mount Wachusett has been a fabulous partner for us this year, coming in and talking with kids, having us come to their Devon's campus to look at some of their programs, helping us reach out and look at different things, dual enrollment with them. And I, I'm hoping that that relationship grows, you know, I'd like to see our kids doing some of the math modeling courses, because they do get terrified when they're, when they're taking the Accuplacer. To their credit, Mount Wachusett comes in and does the Accuplacer at our school, and that makes it a little more comfortable for the kids to do that. We're gonna use professional development time to work even better on differentiated instruction. Differentiated instruction is what we do, because our kids are coming in with particular learning needs and particular learning styles. And the, and the teachers are really gifted at it, but the more tools we can give them for their toolbox, the better. So a lot of our PD time is spent with them sharing practices, we come in and, and we learn about other practices that are out there. And just what do you need, so that, so you, we can help you with your classrooms. And they're really good about sharing, they're really good about going into each other's classrooms and offering advice. We had a new math teacher this year, and Mr. Livingston, who was our veteran math teacher, was always in her classroom or having her in, in his classroom, so that they could share styles, share ideas. And she taught him a lot too, because he's been out of school for a while, and, and she just, just finished up a master's at, at Fitchburg State. And, and she was able to, to give, to give him a lot of stuff, and he was, and he was receptive to it, which was really nice. The math teachers are working with the district math coach to, to look at the Eureka curriculum and make better use of that. So that, you know, the teachers are, do a lot on their own, but like the Eureka math curriculum has a lot of positives to it. And, and making sure that the teachers are using that, we got a new math graphing program for the kids, for the, for the math teachers to be able to use. And that makes it a lot easier for them to project something on the, on the board and, and be able to do that instead of drawing the graphs all the time and, and, and making use of that. All the teachers are gonna do more to require students to write effectively in their disciplines. Our teachers wear out our laptop carts. We have almost constant use of the two bigger laptop carts, and then we're also using a lot of the Chromebook cart that's down in the, in the, in the Learning Center. And it's because the teachers see the value of students writing on computer and revising on computer and being able to share things on Google Docs and Google Go Drive, so that they're not just writing stuff out and then having to rewrite. They're learning how to revise properly the way that you do it now and in real life. And so, you know, but that makes it also easier on the teachers, because they're not just doing this and then, and then getting something back and seeing the frustration on the students' faces. So that interaction with them makes it a lot easier. And in a lot of cases, the teacher can, can go on and watch the student as they're writing and be able to offer suggestions and call them up while they're doing that. And, and so that's, that's, that makes it, again, a lot easier for them to help the students revise and, and write effectively. We're gonna continue to use academic enrichment time to bring presenters in. DCU has already said, when can we come back, next year in planning that? UMass Extension is, is anxious to come back. We had a couple of nice field trips where we went to places like Booel Owens, and they, they had our students in on Fridays, gave them tours. From, from the tour there, we're working on trying to get an internship in place for one of the students who just, out of nowhere, she was a rock star in, in this tour, and, you know, I never would've thought she'd be interested in manufacturing, and she said, I didn't even wanna go on this field trip, but she, she loved it, she asked some great questions. And, and they're kinda anxious on having that conversation. And if we can establish some of these internships, that opens, it opens the doors for a lot of other students after that student, and also gives us the frameworks to present to other employers to say, hey, we'd like to do this, you know? We're gonna be knocking on City Hall's door about saying, hey, when, how can we get some internships in place for our students so that they can learn how the city government work, how do, how do we really make change? And, 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 you know, what, what really goes on in there, because people don't know. And, you know, it's kind of interesting too, a lot of our kids have registered to vote, and, and I think that that's kinda cool. And I think the fact that it's online now makes it a lot easier for them to do that, because I remember- Because I remember from most schools that I've worked at, kids hatefully fill in the card and then mailing it in because you don't know what's happening. But when you go online and do it, it's fairly easy. And again, they're savvy that way, and it makes them kind of excited to do it. Now we've got to see if they do vote, but hopefully that's the case. And I think we'll be promoting that a lot with our 18-year-olds and plus come November because, you know, especially when it's a presidential election, that's kind of an important event for them. And that, if you can establish those habits with the kids, then that makes it that much better. So, you know, and part of that is having someone like Mayor Dean Natale came in a couple of times and answered all the questions. And, you know, it makes the kids excited about saying, wow, you know, city government does care about me. And that makes a huge difference, too. We're revising our intake process so we can be more interactive with our teachers. What we do, what we're doing now is asking questions that the teachers would like to have students answer. We scan those in so that the teachers have access to that information on X2, which is the software package that we use. And then they're able to see, okay, what is, what's going on with this student? You know, sometimes they do that planning-wise, and other times it's a matter of, wow, this kid, I'm not really quite reaching them. What do they like to do? What motivates them? And one of the questions we ask is, what hinders your learning? And then the teachers have a look and say, oh, that's why. You know, because, again, everybody at Goodrich Academy is there for a different reason. And it's a matter of, okay, how do we give you the pace you need? How do we give you the teaching that you need so that you can learn the best? Because if they're not doing the learning, it's not working no matter how much the teachers are putting in. And, you know, again, we're always going back to the mission statement. The teachers, the school council spent all year helping me work on this, on the school improvement plan, because I want it to be theirs. And I want it to be something that they're saying, yeah, we want to do that. So that's what I got.
Questions? I've got, I've been attending the school's graduation and some of the classes before you even had a name. The days of Garo Papazian. And the graduations were held right there in the auditorium. And you folks have come such an incredibly long way, I'll tell you. And it's just a
That staff is so unbelievably
It's a terrific, terrific program. Everyone should try to take in that graduation at least once to see how special it is.
Hopefully you give me some feedback on how to do that better so we can honor those kids even more better.
Yeah.
More better.
I've been doing, I've been attending since I was on school committee.
Yep.
Then as a city councilor, as a state rep, you know, and other mayors.
The pride in the parents' faces and their siblings, you know, it makes you teary a little bit because it is such a huge moment for them, especially because they never thought it was going to happen.
Yeah.
And they did it. And it's all, you know, and the pride on the students' faces because it is all theirs. You know, they had to make a conscious decision. They couldn't float through high school. They couldn't just, you know, get the, you know, good boy and go grades. They had to struggle, and they had to make a conscious decision to come to Goodrich and finish up. And I think those kids really deserve a lot of respect.
They did because they really, they want to be there.
They value it.
Yeah.
It's not just a checklist.
Questions? Yes?
Technology, do you have a need for technology?
There's obviously a need for technology. I think, though, there's some, Mrs. Spiny says that there's another laptop cart coming to us, so we're just going to keep burning them out.
Just Paula and Eileen, just keep letting them know. I know one of the things tonight for Eureka Math is part of the big purchase we're
It's a big picture item, yeah.
Yes, and that will be coming also.
Yeah, we're very excited about that. And, you know, the superintendent's office and everyone over in central office is unbelievably responsive to Goodrich. And, you know, Mr. Ravenel hasn't exactly given me a blank check, but he has said, if you need something, you will have it.
Do I say ask?
And ask. All we've had to do is ask, and it's been taken care of. And, you know, that really makes you feel really good because of the value that they put on every student in this district. And you guys, too.
I just wanted to comment. I live in that neighborhood, so I walk my dog past Goodrich Street School all the time.
You pick up after it, right?
I do, actually. We pick up the trash in the field.
We haven't seen anything there, so probably.
But whenever we walk past, I mean, the students are, you know, they might be outside waiting to go in, or they're, you know, on a break or something. But they're always really receptive. They, you know, they talk to me, they talk to my dog, they, and I ask them questions about the school, and they're always so engaged. And one morning, it was early in the morning, and I said, we were walking by, and I said, wow, what's going on? And he said, oh, we're going on a field trip. And they were so excited. And, I mean, they're enthusiastic about being there.
A lot of them, that's the first field trip they've ever been on. And we took three trips this year, and just, you know, the deer in the headlights look that some of them have, and the fact that, like, when we went to a 1080 conference, which is a STEM conference at Birmingham State. And our kids had a great time, and they were stars there. And, you know, we had all these kids from, you know, different, you know, STEM charter schools and different other programs and honors programs and stuff like that. And our kids were right in the middle of it and having a great time and taking leadership within the groups that they were put into. And it was fun. It was really fun being there with them.
I'm really thrilled to hear you talk about the internship model, and I think whatever you might need to help develop that, that is
I will ask.
Yeah, please, because I think that's, I think that's really critical for every kid.
Yeah. I think, you know, school to career is, like, when they're doing the work-based learning model and stuff like that, that's good. But I think if you can get someone to really learn what goes on at City Hall, what, you know, if they're at Booel Owens', learning, hey, I want them to learn this phase of the job, this phase of the job, this phase of the job, so that they really have an understanding of this company. You know, and they're not just in a line, you know, putting things in a box. And that's valuable, but it's not as valuable as saying, okay, why are these things going in the box? And what are these, how do you get this packaging to look that way?
Right. And it builds their professional connections.
It really does. It really does. You know, so it's exciting, the possibilities that this school has. And, you know, and again, whenever we've looked at something, central office hasn't said, well, we've always done it this way, so you can't do it. They've always said, try it. And, you know, I think Pittsburgh Public Schools wants to innovate. Pittsburgh Public Schools wants to be a leader. And in a lot of ways, it is. Some of the other schools in the area really need to take notice because there's a lot of cool things going on in this district.
I shared with you, I was in a class with a lot of people from surrounding districts, and the buzz was, oh my God, we've got to figure out what Goodrich is doing because a lot of our kids, a lot of their kids are going to Goodrich, so.
Well, they should just get out of the way and let them know.
I kind of said that plenty.
Don't stop wasting your money.
You know, send them to where we do it right.
Yeah. And, you know, I've talked with administrators from other districts, and they've said, I don't know why we're wasting our money. Like, I don't know why either. So, you know, it's, I think, there's a lot, there's a lot going on that's really great at Goodrich, and there's a lot of rich possibilities. And it's just amazing how receptive this whole area is to trying things for high school kids. And part of it is because they recognize there's a huge need in the manufacturing industry for kids who get it and who are prepared for it. There's a huge need in the medical industry for kids who get it and are looking for ways to get the right training. And, you know, I think a lot of the community colleges in this area are taking a lead that traditional colleges aren't doing, and they're willing to work with us as far as that stuff goes, too. You know, I think we're talking on Wednesday with the Mount Wachusett's president. And I'm going to bounce a whole lot of stuff off him. He's new, so just pepper him in and make him feel like there's reasons to do that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support.
Well, you've seen it all now, and I'm sure you're just as convinced as I am. We have eight fabulous, we're so lucky to have the administrators that we have.
We are.
Who do the work that they do. And I hope that everyone at home, if you've watched both of these, you really now know this is a very transparent deal. Here's what's going on in our schools. And it's really good stuff. We have before you a donation, an athletics donation for $250, and it's to be put into the athletic revolving account. And it's the one that we heard at graduation. It's from the class of 2016. And then you have a whole list, I'm going to read some of them off just so people know the kinds of things that we're actually putting into the schools, which are being funded by school choice money to the tune of over a million dollars. A lot of our school supplies and materials and middle school sports are available here in Pittsburgh for all students for free. And we fund that through school choice money. Science supplies. The play, the musical, which has now completed its fourth year, that's $10,000 a year. That is an investment that you make. This district believes there was, I think I sent the article, something big about Springfield. One of the things that they're doing is increasing their music program. And there's a whole article that was in the Boston Globe about what they're seeing going on in the school district because of their focus on music. And a lot of the stuff that they're planning to do or starting to do, we've been doing already. Art supplies and music supplies, that's $32,000 that we give to all of our teachers and music teachers to get the things that they need. The Advanced Academic Learning Initiative that I began six years ago now, this amount has gone down because Paula has looked at the grant, and a lot of the work that some of these teachers are doing are in line with the work that's in the Title I grant. But we're still funding almost $200,000 of these teachers' salaries. These are the teachers that are in every single one of our schools that are helping to identify areas in which students are ready to do more challenging work and offer them that work. The Pittsburgh High Auditorium Upgrade, this has been one of my, I've been working on this one now for three years. I hope to see it by the next musical. And that is that we'd have our own sound system with mics and everything else, because it just doesn't seem right to have kids practice so long and work so hard to learn these things, and then if the mic system isn't good, people don't get the benefit of hearing it. So that's one of my goals for this year. The math initiative, this is the work that the Resource Subcommittee heard. Wendy did a whole presentation on all of the math. Most of them are consumables because they're things that'll be used up. The electronic signs. So we've gone through the board, the planning board, and we have their approval to move forward. I'm hoping, doing everything I can, to have a new sign, electronic sign up at South Street and at Rheingold. South Street, yeah. No, South Street and Memorial. South Street and Memorial. And then we're trying to get Rheingold into the pipeline for the next meeting this summer. And as you heard from Jeremy.
Just putting the back, the sign for South Street, we need to coordinate with the initiative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, all those same people are on all the same committees, so. And the South Street sign, I'm going to change that to a dual, double-sided sign, so that, and it's going to be a little bit closer to the street, so that whether you're coming up or down the street, you'll be able to see what's posted on that sign. Chromebooks, I talked to Eileen and talked to Jeremy, and I wanted to make this September, the first September, where all entering freshmen at Pittsburgh High School would have their own Chromebook. And that's with this $100,000. That's $100,000, $90,000 for the signs. The district-wide tech replacement, that's something that Eileen has put in there in terms of getting a replacement amount in there so that as things get aged out, there's money to put in the new ones. The credit recovery, right now, you've heard reference to Playto a number of times today. We're also looking at another software. I'm not sure which way it will go. But this $60,000 will be there to cover that. The pre-k literacy, that is, that's the
Yep, that's the district's contribution
That's our contribution to the footsteps to Brilliant. And then, as you know, we fund Jana for our public relations work. She works on all of our press releases and goes to our events and all of that. So great investment, school choice money. It's what enhances the districts and makes it a district where people want to stay. And then there are some policies that are here. One for the second reading on the administration of medications, and then a second one also for the second reading.
How do you folks wish to proceed with the action items? There is no public testimony, I take it.
I would make a motion
Yes.
To bundle the
Thank you.
School choice spending. I think we could look at the other one separately, but
All right, well, let's have, can we get a motion?
I'll second that.
All right, motion and seconded for, to bundle the school choice. So let's say that 15-689 up through and including 15-705.
And 708.
And 708. Thank you, that's right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made. Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Could I just ask, where's, what is 708?
708 was the $4,500
Oh, right, thank you.
At the beginning.
I didn't write it in, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. $4,200?
$4,200.
$4,200.
Okay, so, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. 15-686, approve the superintendent recommends to allow the eighth-grade middle school students to plan a trip to Washington, DC, June 4th through the 7th, 2017.
Motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. 15-687, approve the superintendent recommends to allow the Long Joe sixth-grade students to plan a trip to AMC White Mountains, New Hampshire, May 30th to June 2nd, 2017. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. 15-688, approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the donation of $250 for athletics from the class of 2016.
Make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. And continuing, 15-706, approve the superintendent recommendation to approve the second reading of the administration of medications, prescription medications, number 5701-01. Motion made.